Father God, we give thanks and are so appreciative for the opportunity to meet in a free environment in this country, Lord, and we thank you for our veterans who have fought so hard to assure these freedoms. Lord, we ask of your blessings and good health and for all these young men that are here tonight, our future leaders, bless them and their families. Father God, we ask your guidance into this new year. We ask that you look after our council members, our elected leaders, all of our city employees, and give us guidance in everything we do. And Father God, we ask that you continue to comfort the Olive family, passing of our former mayor, and give them grace, give them comfort in all that we do. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. All righty, well, welcome, everybody, to the Oviedo City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have all members of council are present. This evening, our first item of business is a ceremonial item and is a presentation on Central Florida Workplace Challenge by Green Destination Orlando. So, folks, come on up, introduce yourselves, name and address for the record, and proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and thank you, Scouts, former Scouts. I'm a former Scout as well, and great job on the pledge. We're here to take up just a few minutes of your time. We're going to talk a little bit about Green Destination Orlando and the Central Florida Workplace Challenge, and thank you so much for your time again. Green Destination Orlando is established to promote Central Florida as a premier green destination. We're a nonprofit organization. We're trying to unify diverse groups to make Central Florida leader in sustainability, and our vision is to promote Central Florida as a totally sustainable culture, supporting healthy living, social responsibility, environmental stewardship, and economic vitality. And I am Jeff Daniels. I'm sorry, I should have announced my name at the beginning. I am the president of Green Destination Orlando, and with me is Alexa Stone. She is one of the founding members of the organization as well. So, and to do this, we're trying to increase the influence in Central Florida for sustainability and for what the different municipalities and organizations and businesses are doing, hospitality industry, healthy workplaces, green education, and also resource conservation. So, the Green Destination had kind of a modest start. We were a piece of the U.S. Green Building Council as an advocacy committee, and then we split off a little bit to become Green Destination Orlando. We call ourselves GDO for short. And one of the things, one of the exciting things we're doing right now is we are being asked to be the administrator for Orange County's Central Florida Workplace Challenge, and that is really what we're here for, is to promote that and present that. Now, I'll ask Alexa to talk a little bit more about that.
Hi, everybody. The Central Florida Workplace Challenge that Jeff just mentioned is a no-cost challenge for businesses, and the idea is to get businesses enrolled and to encourage them to become more socially responsible. And by that, we mean to offer a healthy workplace for the people that work there, to participate, be volunteers in the community, and also to maintain sustainable operations, be responsible for what they do. So, that's what we're calling the Workplace Challenge. You can see the three medallions up there. So, this website that will be available for businesses to sign up on is actually going to be launched tomorrow at the Orange County Economic Summit by the mayor. And Mayor Teresa Jacobs, having teamed up with the city of Winter Park and the city of Orlando, is opening this to any of the cities around Central Florida, and our idea here is to invite and encourage and hope that you might like to participate also in the Central Florida Workplace Challenge. So, online, there'll be a checklist for each of these three areas, and any business that wanted to participate could choose any one of these three areas to compete. When we say it's just a friendly competition, but at the end, there will be an award ceremony in June, and we'll be recognizing businesses based on their size and their success in these three categories. That's good. We've got the award ceremony. We want to give recognition to businesses that participate. And so you know, this platform, the Central Florida Workplace Challenge, has already been used in cities across the nation. So, it's a tried and true package. It's available. You'll be able to see it tomorrow when it is officially announced. Thank you.
It'll be in the morning. I think it is at nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, and anybody can also go to greendestinationorlando.org and see more information on the Central Florida Workplace Challenge. Again, we'd love to have you all participate. We know that Oviedo is already involved in sustainable activities, so we think a lot of the businesses would qualify. As far as Green Destination goes, since we're the administrator for the Workplace Challenge, we do need to raise a little bit of funds, so we're having some activities and events, and they're terrific, and we'd love to be able to invite you to participate in some of the events. We had one a couple of weeks ago. You can skip the sponsorship because that's not for the government, but here's some pictures. You can see Jeff here in the upper-left corner. We were at an organic brewery, having an event, a little fundraiser. We also did a yoga Glow Flow event, which was actually on the rooftop in the open air on a building on downtown Orlando. That was a lot of fun. And we have an event coming up, which is really kind of special because it's a pre-Valentine event, and it's called "So Speaks the Chef." We'll have the chef of a vegan restaurant giving a little bit of education or people on options to use non-meat items and cooking in a healthy way, and we'll have raw chocolate brownies, and we'll have music, and we'll have a live artist. So, we actually brought invitations for you all, and we're hoping you might consider attending, learn a little bit more about the Workplace Challenge, and see what kind of people are involved. And I think that's about all we have for you tonight. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Well, we appreciate you coming down, and maybe are you going to do another one next year as well?
We will do this on an annual basis, yes.
So, perhaps if we can get a little more coordination upfront before the start of the event, and I know we discussed it at an event back in November, you know, perhaps then we can look and participate and get the local businesses.
Yeah, we'd love to have you participate next year. That'd be... We're wanting to participate this year. Would that be acceptable to all of you? Okay, fantastic.
Of course. We just don't know how to get the word out to them with it starting tomorrow, so maybe you can help us with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be sending the word out to as many people as we can. Excellent. And if you can send some, we have this information, just send us all your contact information. And I see Dr. Korea back there with a big smile on her face. This is right up her alley. Dr. Korea, you are now the champion of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, folks. All righty, that's the end of our presentation items. First item of business that we have is the approval of minutes for the January 4th, 2016 regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
And we won't be mad if you guys go have dinner. Don't worry about it.
Yes, you don't have to stay.
Oh, yeah.
Boy Scouts have to stay. We're not letting them out yet. All righty, moving right along, we're up to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the time of the meeting. If anybody in the audience would like to address council on an item not on our agenda, you can do so at this time. I have no written requests this evening. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight are items number four through seven. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
No, I just happened to be at the townhouse today for lunch, so packed as it was, it looked wonderful, and...
It was great.
It was, food was great as usual, and everybody was having a great time, and I said it's packed beyond compare, so congratulations and luck in the future as it keeps moving forward.
Councilwoman?
No, I'm good, thank you.
My left?
Good.
No. Gentlemen, I'd like to pull item seven off and make it seven eight, please.
Good.
Motioner and seconder agree?
Uh huh.
All righty. So, on the consent agenda now, we have items four through six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of adopting items four through six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item seven A, which is the first item pulled off the consent agenda. This is resolution number 3138-16. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a brief introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve the selection of PDCS LLC for building services and to authorize the city manager to negotiate a new agreement and to approve an extension of the current agreement that we have with PDCS. The city council approved a resolution about six years ago to outsource our building services, and PDCS was selected at that time as our building service provider. The initial term of the agreement was for one year, and then there were five successive one-year extensions. The contract with PDCS will be ending soon, therefore the city did, went out and did a request for proposals this year. There were three responsive firms, and an evaluation committee evaluated those firms. We also had oral presentations and then checked references, and then the committee evaluated each of the firms, and at the end of the process, the committee recommended that we continue our relationship with PDCS. What is asked of the council tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the selection of PDCS to continue the service and allow us to negotiate a new agreement. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3138-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anybody have any questions, or do you like me to start since I pulled it? Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Cobb, the reason why I pulled it is the only thing we have in our agenda packets tonight are your scoring sheets. We have none of the proposals. I don't know what everybody was looking at. I see a revenue split. I don't know if others were higher. PDCS doesn't provide the fire services that we need the most, fire inspection services. Did others offer us that? So, I'm going to find it very hard to vote in favor of this without the rest of that information. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I'm not saying that the choice is necessarily bad. I'm not saying the choice is good. I have nothing to base it on but scoring sheets, so that's the reason why I pulled it off, and I would ask the council that we table this till the next meeting when we can get a little bit more information. I'll make that motion. A motion and we have a second. Mr. Cobb, can we get that all in the packet for the next meeting?
Sure can.
So, that way we can take a look at everything, drill down into it a little bit more, and go from there. Anybody have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing.
Sure, of course.
And Brian, we've talked about this. Back when we made this, passed this ordinance, there was an analysis done that basically said at a certain point, it is more favorable for the city to do these services in-house than it is to outsource it. I don't know what that point is or if we've reached it or not, but I'd like to see if we can find that old analysis and then maybe update it to give us a vector on where we are with this.
Any other comments? All right, the motion on the table is to table to the next meeting. That would be for ordinance number 3138-16. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our public hearings, we have none. Moving on to first reading of ordinances, it's ordinance, item number nine, ordinance number 1634, allowing pet dogs in outdoor seating for restaurants. Who knew that that was not allowed? Well, I guess Mary from TJ's found out when she got fined, but that's besides the point. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a brief introduction?
Actually, Mayor, I think it would be best to have Mr. Grude do the read by title.
Okay, Mr. Grude?
Pass that buckle.
Yeah, go ahead. No, he's got to read it. It's that first reading stuff. Mr. Grude, can you read ordinance 1634 by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, relating to dog-friendly restaurants, providing for definitions, providing for application requirements, providing for regulations, providing for permit expiration, renewal, and revocation, providing for complaints, reporting, and enforcement, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for multiple complication, as well as the correction of discrimination errors, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by Tom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grude. Mr. Cobb, tell us how we got here.
Thank you, Mayor. Florida statutes prohibits animals such as dogs from attending or visiting what they call public food establishments, restaurants. However, the statute does provide an exemption, and what it states is that a local government can pass an ordinance that grants an exemption to allow restaurants to allow dogs to visit their place of business, the outdoor part of the place of business. So, if you had an outdoor patio at a restaurant, the statute says that the local government can create the exemption through the passage of an ordinance. The ordinance 1634 does this. It creates the exemption. It creates a permitting process for a restaurant to come to the city and obtain a permit to allow the dogs to be in their outdoor areas. It creates insurance protections for the city. It also has sanitary and safety regulations. It provides a process for the permit as far as expiration and renewal, and it also creates code enforcement procedures for those that don't follow the rules. It's recommended that the city council read the ordinance by title, while it's already done, and schedule a public hearing for February 1st, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1634 on Monday, February 1st, 2016, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenck, you have anything?
No, like I said, it's something that was being done, and nobody realized that there was any need for this ordinance until someone had got fined, so...
All right. Nothing, Councilwoman?
Nothing.
Down the left? Good. Mr. Cobb, can you just clarify one thing for me, because I think something got glossed over. You talked about the, actually, this ordinance is called the Dixie Clary something, 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 something. Wasn't it written by the state for us to adopt specifically to go around the ordinance that they wrote or the legislation?
That's the name of the statute. Actually, Mr. Grude has the history on it. Yes.
Okay. Second question I have for you. We're going to issue a local permit, but they still have to go to the Department of Health to get a permit.
Yes, sir.
And the Department of Health does all the inspections, so the Department of Health is going to require hand sanitizers. It's all listed in this...
Right.
Dixie Clary, whatever this little puppy, whatever the story was. Isn't there a story to that you shared with us?
No, Dixie Bell was the name of the dog, and Clary's the name of the senator who sponsored the legislation, and the dog was at the ceremony when the governor signed it, so that's the history of it.
Put his paw print or her paw print on it or something, didn't...
They did that, too.
All right.
But some people prefer to the governor's, but that's...
The Health Department will not allow the restaurant to allow the dogs unless they have a permit from the city.
Correct. All right. Yes, Councilman?
I'll get into it further at the public hearing, but the state does not allow this right now, and they are saying if the city wants to adopt it, then it's fine. Sounds like passing the buck to me. Why didn't they just say it was fine? Because they have some concerns about it, I would think. So, I'll just leave it at that till February 1st.
We'll discuss it then, I guess. I don't know.
Well, if you want to, I don't care. I get it. I just think it's odd that the state doesn't allow it, but they'll say if we want to do it, it's fine, so it puts all the burden on us, you know? So, it's just kind of weird. You know, the state's taking control of everything else we do, but they don't want to take control of dogs in restaurants. It just doesn't make too much sense to me, you know?
Can I, I have a question about that. So, the state doesn't allow it, but they want them to apply for a permit.
And they can't get that permit unless we have an ordinance that says they can. So, basically, we're passing an ordinance to allow them to go apply for a permit.
Yep, so they got to pay the state for a permit and us for a permit.
You got it. Yes, it is odd, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mary at TJ's couldn't believe it, and quite frankly, remember when we first discussed it? I didn't think any one of us even knew it, we had to do it.
Right.
You know, but communities like, you got Winter Park, Winter Garden, Orlando, you know, who have, are encouraging new downtowns and restaurants and cafes, you know, are all passing this because it's, you know, that's what you want. You want people out walking around. You want them to take a seat. You want them to feel comfortable, so...
Mr. Cobb, if it's possible for February 1st, and don't, you know, don't delve into it too hard, but if it's possible, I'd like to know how many other cities, local cities, have passed this, if you have it, you know, just in general, don't spend a lot of time, but if you could let us know who and what has passed it, you know, around here anyway.
I think that list was in the first discussion packet we had on it, Brian, so it should be easy to...
I think so.
Yeah. All righty, anything else from anyone?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'll call the vote to schedule the public hearing for our next meeting, February 1st, 6:30 PM. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving along, we're up to resolution number, excuse me, item number 10, resolution number 3135-16, site development order number 452-15. Mr. Cobb, would you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to consider an amendment to an approved preliminary subdivision plan for lots 3A, I mean, 3B and 4 of Oviedo on the park and the lot A preliminary plan. At your last meeting, oh, let me back up just a little bit. The proposed, the preliminary subdivision plan for lot A contains or approved mixed uses. It approved 246 dwelling units, and then it also approved 10,358 square feet of office use within the buildings. At your last meeting, you adopted resolution number 3129-16, and what that resolution did, it approved the site development order and the architectural design order for the final engineering and architecture for lot A. The thing about it was, there was a little discrepancy that was included. The final engineering and architecture included two additional dwelling units, and it also included additional square feet of office. And so, we put a condition in that order to say you have to go back and amend the preliminary subdivision plan, and that's what we're here tonight. This is an amendment to the preliminary subdivision plan to correct the number of dwelling units and to correct the amount of square foot, office square feet, so that the final plans and the preliminary subdivision plan both match. And there's no other changes to anything else other than to get those numbers to match. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3135-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is, I see a representative of the applicant here. Does anybody from the applicant have anything to add other than what Mr. Cobb just said? Nope. All right, great. I have no request to speak forms on this item, but as usual, if anybody in the audience wants to address us on it, I will entertain it. Hearing none, I close public comment and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution 3135-16?
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, anything?
It's ministerial. Basically makes the PSP match the final plan so that someday down the road, when somebody looks at both of them, there's no discrepancies that say this one said 246 and this one said 10358, so it's simply ministerial.
Thank you. Councilman Britton?
I agree.
Councilman Henkin?
Good.
Good.
Counsel. And Brian, to clarify, it's two additional dwelling units and about 1,500 square foot more of office space.
That is correct, Mayor.
Right. Right, that, yeah, that was already approved. All right.
We're just making the PSP match it.
All right. Seems like an awful lot of work to make those two little numbers match. Anyway, motion on the table is to adopt. Is there anything else with the good of the order? Anybody? Nope. Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving along, discussion items, we have none. Mr. Cobb, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one thing. This Saturday is the annual Cops in Cars event at Oviedo Mall, and I'd like to have Chief Chen now come up and just give us a little preview.
Always a fun event.
It's good evening. This Saturday is our annual Cops in Cars for Kids event over at the Oviedo Mall. I'm happy to report we have a large number of law enforcement agencies who have signed up to have vehicles there. We also have a good number of muscle cars and antique cars that'll be there, along with some interesting, DEA will be there with one of their methamphetamine research vehicles that they take apart the methamphetamines labs with, and some other interesting vehicles. FD will be out there doing their normal, cutting off tops of cars and demonstrating how they extricate people, have canine demonstrations, and it is all free to the public.
Well, it's always a great job, and you partner up with the Optimist Club, if I remember.
The Optimist Club and the Winter Springs Police Department. It's supposed to be 58 degrees as a high, but it will be sunny, no rain, so it should be a good day to walk around and look at the law enforcement cars and the other cars that people are going to be bringing out.
Yeah, because usually you have a couple hundred cars show up, right?
Last year, we had about 200 cars. I'm hoping for a little more this year.
That is exceptional.
And all the money from the vendors and all the money from the people that are bringing the antique cars and muscle cars goes to a children's charity.
Awesome. Any other questions for the chief?
I hope it's a great event. It's always a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Cobb, anything else?
No, Mayor, nothing else.
Excellent. Mr. Grude, anything for us tonight?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, though.
We're up to Councilwoman Drago.
Well, I attended the fundraiser that the Police Foundation had the other night at Rock and Brew's. It was very nice, good food, and I saw a lot of people there, so I imagine it was very successful. Other than that, no other report.
Councilmember Britton, you're up.
Same thing. Good job with the fundraiser, chief, wishing well for us, and also Drew and Brian, great job with the MLK parade and Family Day. That's always a fun event, and it turned out really nice this year.
Anything else?
That's it.
Ditto on the parade. It was a well-attended event, and the party in the park seemed to be, as always, well-attended, so Drew, great job, not only you and your staff, but also OCIA. I know they're heavily involved in it, and it pulled off without a hitch as usual. The Oviedo ER sent us a date for sometime in February. They're having a topping-off ceremony for the, a treetopping ceremony for all the steel work at the hospital. I don't have that date exactly with me right now, but I know it's sometime in February, they asked, they sent something out that said save the date. I'll find it and make sure it's sent out to everybody if you didn't get it. They are getting close there. Went to a presentation last week with the Chamber of Commerce and Casey Donahue, and it is, you know, it's getting real, so... you know, it's getting real, so they are gonna start, start their hiring of the administrative staff, starting next month, and then they're gonna move into hiring the operations staff over the summer, so, um, you know, they, they are just rolling along. And lastly, yesterday, Mr. Cobb and I were at mayor's and managers, and we got a, an interesting update on bears, and...
I heard it was very, very insightful.
It was very insightful, uh, just what it takes to manage the, the bear population, and how many bears there actually are, that, uh, you know, wander, wander around, and what we learned, actually, is the, the bears are becoming bigger, heavier, and healthier by eating our garbage.
Garbage.
Yeah, not, not the acorns that they're supposed to be eating, and they actually become more fertile when they, when they become bigger, that's something else that we learned yesterday, too.
Yes.
Who, who knew? Um, but it, it was very informative, we, they did not list us as a problem area, it was quite evident that, um, west of I-4, when they, when they did the map of the, the bear sightings, was the heavily populated and problem area at this time, but we did have a few dots, you know, out and about throughout Oviedo, so, uh, you know, they are out there, but, you know, the best advice that we were given by, um, Mr. Orlando, what was his first name?
Michael.
Michael?
Mm-hmm.
Michael Orlando, from the Fish and Wildlife, was just to, you know, secure up your garbage, put it out as late as you can, the, the morning of your pickup, and just keep it away from the bears, I mean, that's, that's really what it's all about, as far as locking garbage cans and stuff, you know, you read in the, the newspaper, how they make that sound very simple, but we also got an education yesterday on just how difficult that makes it on the trash haulers, uh, because they actually have to get out and manually unlock every can, and then a can that usually has a 10-year life, now only has a three-year life, so, um, uh, it was a very interesting presentation, but thank goodness we don't have that big of a problem out here. Uh, with all that being said, that is the end of my report, and we move on to Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thanks, I, I like...
That's you, just so I can remind you.
Nice job, um, the MLK parade, I like all the comments, uh, it's fine to hear when people say that's their favorite event of the year, uh, they love the party, and I love being in the park, and events going on, so, that was a lot of fun, uh, and thanks to Drew and the staff, exactly. The chamber had their mayor's update this past month, uh, went very well, uh, both Mayor Lacy from Winter Springs, and Mayor Prentice gave updates, uh, again, very, it's always very well-attended, that one, and it was very well-received, uh, everybody got to hear what's going on, had some questions, uh, but it's a very good presentation, the mayor did a wonderful job, as always.
Thank you.
Had a great line that said about the, um, about the crime statistics, Winter Springs is slightly, just, we're both very low, theirs is just a tad lower than ours, um, so the mayor, basically, as he said, was, well, we stop them from the border from getting to you, so it's, that's why we're just a little bit bigger, is we just stop them here before they even get to you.
Right, Chief, you stop them before they get to Winter Springs.
Exactly, so, but it was a very good presentation, very well-received by the chamber, and the chamber members, they really appreciated it. Is it the food trucks, the 27th, Drew?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth is food trucks, sorry, at, uh, at Oviedo on the park, uh, again, you know, you have great food trucks out there, have, become a bigger event every month, uh, everybody's getting back in the swing of things, so mark it on your calendar for the 28th, Thursday, and I had the privilege of having lunch at the townhouse today, I know the only reason I got in was because I was with Congressman Micah, uh, but had a great conversation with Congressman Micah, it's a privilege, A, to have him so close, and have his office here, um, has, he is insightful, and, uh, gives us a lot of information, and having the ability to reach out to him and talk so easily to him is a great thing, um, I appreciate that, but it was a very good conversation, and again, very great to have him and his office and staff so close, that's it.
Great, thank you, Councilman Henken?
Um, just two quick things, so, Boy Scouts, you all ready to go home, 'cause we're almost done?
Yeah, you got a good night.
You got your, you got your badge, and, you got your badge, and it was a quick night, not one of these three hours, so thank you all for being here, it was fun to have you all, you guys have a good time? You did? Well, that's good, um, I just wanted to say, Mr. Cobb, I was unable to make the event you had today, but I appreciate very much this certificate that the city gave me today for, um, 10 years of sitting up here.
I was robbed, I was robbed.
Yeah.
Oh, you should've been there, it was a Steve Harvey moment, it was given to him.
He was standing, he was talking 10 years of service, and he's handing it to me, till he opened up, like, oh wait, that's Councilman Henken, I'm only not...
It was okay, we removed the tiara, and we brought it to you.
But in all seriousness, you know, it's really been one of the highlights of my life, to sit up here for so long, and, uh, you know, and, and more importantly, to have a staff that I have had, basically, with me since I started, um, and these four awesome people that I sit with, who've been here just about all of those 10 years as well, so, I'm looking forward to, to many more, um, but I just wanted to say thank you, and boy, this time flight seemed like it was just yesterday, you know?
It was a great employee appreciation, uh, lunching, uh, and it was, the awards were given out, longevity and how long your service, it was 10 years for you, 15 years for the mayor, five years, 20 years?
20 years for Mr. Cobb.
So this year for Mr. Cobb, um, so the length of service and the time is, uh, thank you guys for all the service.
But, yeah, it's really been...
And the quarterly, uh, employee of the quarters were...
Police officers.
Police officers who fought a, an alligator, and wrestled an alligator, uh, that was over in an area where there was a, a party affair going on for a church, and there were kids involved, and they called Fish and Wildlife, and Fish and Wildlife said, well, I think it was a four-and-a-half-foot gator, they're like, we're not coming out for a four-and-a-half-foot gator, but it was there, and it was around, and it was staying around, so they, you know, got a rope, got things, and took care of the alligator, so, more than I would, like, great for them.
Lassoed him up and carried him away.
Exactly.
That's all I had, thank you, Mayor.
But the classic line is, I asked the chief if that was, um, should've been a fire department duty, and Chief White would be happy to know that he said that you guys are regulated to cats in trees, so, I thought that was great, anything else, Councilman?
No, sir, thank you.
Alrighty, um, one thing I did forget to mention is the, uh, if everybody can just check their calendars and let us know, the state of the city this year is looking at doing it on March 9th, it is a Tuesday night, I believe, we have a, no, Wednesday night, I think it's a Wednesday night, so it would be March 9th, this year, we're gonna have it over at the amphitheater, uh, use our facility instead of the school's facility, and, yes, Councilman Schenck, that'll be a very long walk for you.
You'll have to trudge over there.
Yeah, I'll have to walk all the way over, Councilwoman Drago can walk over there, so, uh, please put it in your calendars, where, uh, Mr. Cobb and I have been just having very brief discussions, we're probably gonna start it a little earlier this year, last year, we started at 7, we'll probably start at 6:30, um, we'll shorten up the PowerPoint a little bit, uh, Ms. Bigelow is kinda working on going through the slides, updating them, changing them out, and encouraging me to eliminate 10 or 20 of them, but, uh, so we'll see what happens. Also, there is no work session, I know it was tentatively put in our calendar for this coming Monday, that, when an email went out, so that is canceled, we're not meeting on the 25th. So with all that being said, our future meeting dates that we do have calendared are Monday, February 1st, uh, Monday, February 15th, and Monday, February 7th, those are all regular meetings, uh, here at 6:30, and as is customary here in Oviedo, the meeting on Monday, March 21st, the second meeting, due to, uh, spring break, that one is canceled. So with all that being said, is there anything else with the good of the order, council, staff, Mr. Cobb, chiefs, all that being said, meeting adjourned.